This is the informal meeting for August 8, 2016. We have committee reports on your desk. And two communications, copy of a letter from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding permit application of A. Calaruso &amp; Sons Inc. to facilitate the replacement of an existing concrete wood bulkhead and the stabilization of an eroded shoreline, site location 175 South Front Street. The next communication is from AnimalKind thanking the city for a recent contribution to recognize the crisis in the number of unwanted felines in the city. First resolution for tonight is, if you can, commissioners please, may I have an introduction and a second? Alexis? Abduz? Second resolution for tonight is authorizing the transfer of funds to the Adult Recreation Personal Services account. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Michael? Bob? I have a question. Is this to increase the status of staff number with a very sonically based budget or is this to add additional? This is the additional.
Who approved all these?
Is this from the additional employee or is this for the...
When we first discovered we needed some higher, we had a present drawn up and there was a line already for this amount. Just want to know if it's the same line or we added a line?
Is this the first agreement or new agreement?
Right.
Great question. It says additional funds and it says they're required, but it doesn't say what requires them.
I have a question.
This came from the mayor's office. Excuse me? Yeah, I understood it as being for the part-time employee that was hired for...
The one and only, not the additional.
The one and only part-time employee.
Right. So what additional funds require?
It's just be moved from...
From senior programming to personal services to pay a particular person. So we already budgeted these funds?
Yeah, added together.
Yes. Right. Which begs the question, why are we budgeting them a second time? And I'd like an answer to that before I vote on it. That's just me. Obviously.
Transfer what's in funds?
Answer for next week.
Yeah. We could clarify that.
Thank you, buddy.
Let me finish it. I may agree with you on the policy. Question is, it should be discussed any additional funds to be paid through the committee. As a committee chairman, would you know anything about this funding coming? So let me clarify the record.
Thank you.
It looks like it's just changing the lines, but not in funding. It's just within the general allocation for essentially the same purpose of being moved from one line to another.
Right.
The next resolution is a draft of the agreement with TGW Consulting Group for Grant Writing Services. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Tiffany? Lauren?
The reason I just said hold on is because at the time, we didn't have the Exhibit C, which was the scope of services written out, so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't ready to be adopted until we had that. But I had that and I gave it out everybody today.
Besides the dates, what's changed?
Nothing.
Same fee?
Yes.
Same pretenses?
Yes.
Do we ever get an annual record of everything that they've done for the previous year? A list of grants they've entered, the platform, industry, except just a general one of what's happened?
Question because I haven't been here, so...
Should we ask them?
We could certainly ask for it.
Would you please?
I shall. Okay. And the last resolution of the evening is support of issuing driver's licenses to New York State residents regardless of immigration status. May I have an introduction and a second? Tiffany? Tiffany, would you like to introduce someone from the audience?
I would like to ask in English as well as in Spanish if the people that are here can explain to the council how important it is to have a driver's license, especially for immigrants. Y, a minute, por favor, explique para nosotros para decir por qué es importante tener una licencia para conseguir para los inmigrantes.
Michael, the chair. Michael?
Thanks, council, for taking some time to talk about this and thanks to the audience for coming out. For those who don't know me, I'm Michael Shamidis, I'm chair of the Hudson City Democrats and I'm also a resident of the 5th Ward. So we all know, I believe we all know, that the immigration system in the U.S. is not working, it's broken. We obviously can't fix that in Hudson and we can't fix that in New York State, but one thing we can fix is that there are people who are in our community. Immigrants are a really vital part of our community and they suffer from a lot of hardships that are unnecessary and we can make some changes in Hudson and in New York State to make people's lives better. So one of the key challenges is that if you don't have a social security number, you can't get a driver's license. And if you can't get a driver's license, it's just really hard to live around here, especially if you live in a community where most of the people you know don't have that number.
How do you manage if you don't have a social security number?
That's also difficult, yeah. So we all know that people...
How do you buy a car?
People get cars. So one thing you can do if you have...
They have to work and they get cars?
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like they're suffering from a lot of hardships.
Okay. So, well, we're going to have some other people speak, you can kind of speak to their personal experience, but I think we all know that there are people who live in this community who occasionally drive and/or would like to drive and if they don't have a license that creates a huge hardship. On the flip side, even if you don't care about these people and you don't care about their lives, it still is good for the city to have people who have driver's licenses. So that means that they're buying... If they don't have driver's license, that means they can't get insurance. So we want people who know how to drive to take the driver's test, to get a license, to pay the New York State fee and to get insurance. And that not only makes their lives better and their community better, it also makes our community richer because I think we want people to be engaging as full-fledged participants in our society, but we also want people to be paying into the pool and to be paying into insurance costs and to be paying into the New York State license fees. So as a whole, I think this is a win-win for the community and for Hudson. It's a New York State law, we can't change this law in Hudson, but what we can do is stand up and say that we're in favor of changing this law and sending a note to the state, to Governor Cuomo, and saying, this is something that we'd like to see changed in the future. The Hudson City Democrats have met on this issue and we have voted to support this effort and I hope the council will do the same. And next off, I would like to introduce Juan Sanchez, who is sort of a leader in the Latino community and he can talk a little bit more about people's experiences. Juan?
Will it be all right to translate? Sure. Great. You can hold up the translation.
I came to Columbia County.
About 14 years ago.
I'm a United States citizen. When I arrived to Columbia County, I came to live in the Bronx of Kent. And the first thing that I needed to be able to survive here was a car. The store nearest to my house was about eight miles away. There was no public transportation. The taxis were too expensive. And there was problems with transportation. That's a limit to anyone that's living on the...
What, the continent?
The county.
The county, sorry. It's a...
Yes, it's a problem to be able to move without a car. What do the immigrants and Americans do here? The women clean the house. Another house in Anker. Another house in... In Harlem. And there's another house in Harlem, New York. They don't have a way to transport. But they have to work to be able to survive. They have to work to be able to provide resources to their homes. Other people work on construction sites. They need a car because they have to start working at 7:00 AM. And they have to go buy food. And they have to go buy their children's food. So having a car is not a luxury. It's a necessity of work. It's a tool for work. People work here. If you don't work, you don't eat. Even Latinos, Americanos, immigrants who don't have their documents. A lot of Hispanics, they hold ITIN numbers. They pay their taxes. And produce in this county. They help for the economy. There are people who work in farms for over 28 years. Farms of stock and milk. Farms of cattle. Production of products, of food. They need transport. And it's a problem. They're driving without a license. Because they're forced to go to work. And they drive without a license. So they're breaking the law. But they need to work. So if they have a license, it facilitates their possibility to develop their own work that produces money in this county. It's easy to facilitate the work to help provide for the county. They need a license. Those who have papers... One thing that's important is that a lot of immigrants think we're illegal. There are a lot of people here who have permanent residence and others are citizens. So it's not a problem that we all need a license. But there are people who need to drive to their work, contribute to the economy of Columbia, not only Columbia County, but all over the country. To construct a... What, construit? Construit, how do you say that in English? Construit. Construit, yes. To contribute to the county of Hudson, yeah. So I think it's important that this resolution is approved. It has to be discussed. There's a campaign that has a person here that will discuss it. Someone from a campaign. Called Luz Verde. In the state of New York and there's someone that's working on that. If the council approves this resolution, it would help the rest of the state to have a positive decision in the assembly to approve. Sí. Gracias.
My name is Sonia Sintra and I'm an American citizen. I've been in this country many years. I am associated with international dinner. Hopefully some of you know what this is all about. After September 11, we, a couple of women, we met and we decided to get different cultures together so that we can learn to live together with each other. And we figure the best way is food because everybody likes food. To those, it's gusta comer. So because I've been associated with this international dinner, and I want to make a point, it's not only Latinos, Spanish-speaking people here that need the licenses. We have a community of Bangladesh people, we have a community of Haitians, Polish, and in the international dinner, we planned this for a whole year, we planned every, this is like the 12th or 13th dinner that we've had. We have had the situation where citizens, residents here in the area, they're immigrants and they have no way to get to work, to take their children to school, to, if there's an emergency. I have volunteered to take some of these people, not Latinos. Like I said, it's just not Latinos. I want this to make very clear, there's other immigrants in this country and in this city that really would definitely benefit from this resolution. And if I may say, there's a copy of the resolution and it has a lot of good points, like what Basilia said, insurances, people will have to pay insurance. If there's an accident, people will be more willing to be witnesses for the police. So there's a lot of good reasons for this resolution to be, at least looked at it, really look at it and think about, how are we going to help this community to progress? And remember, it's not just the Latino. I happen to be Puerto Rican, so I'm an American citizen, but I have a lot of friends in many, you know, Bangladesh, Haitian, Polish, there's so many. I'm sure you all know, if you're a resident of Hudson, hopefully you have come across some of them. So keep this in mind, there's a lot of good things that will come out of this resolution and I really ask you to read it and think about it. Think, how are we going to benefit? How is the city going to benefit from it? And the state? And you know, there's only two states that at the present time, I think it's Connecticut and Vermont, that have passed this resolution. So it's not just like a weird thing that we're asking, it's something that is really being thought about. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to talk about 1927, 1987, when this contract, somebody coming like a new immigrant, like an obvious something, and not even an obvious, just known obvious, like that. They have applied for the royal passport, applied for the super secret. And that time, New York State was a, gave us a super secret card and they made in bank accounts at the time. That time, that two ID, you needed, so one is the passport, one passport, another is a bank, bank account ID, make it a non-driving ID in the DM. Then, the non-driving ID, provided one to three ID, become making it a driving license. That's a long time ago. But after that, I think so it will change a lot because a lot happened in this country, especially 9/11. So I don't know what is the government thinking. That time was a, some available source, immigrant getting some verification, and that time was happened, some even super secret numbers that time. I'm talking about 19, so far I think it was 1987 or something like that time. So it is my, because a lot of, I personally, I've met a lot of people, a lot of, that's why I remember that this happened, happened that time. But after that incident, a lot of incidents in this country happened and I think so they closed this, closed the whole, this thing. It's better for something, I believe that it should be had as well security numbers, they can track down who used it and you can get it, you know, that he's by the, everything and you can get a driver's license like that. You can do that. That's my personal opinion. I don't, I'm not expert about the law, expert in this country. I believe that that happened that time, after that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? Your name?
Hi. I don't know. My name is Emma Creche and I am a worker rights advocate with the Worker Justice Center, which is a nonprofit organization. We work throughout New York State, including here in Columbia County and here with folks in Hudson as well. We work extensively with the immigrant community throughout the state, like I said, and here locally, and this is one of the reasons that our organization has been supportive of this effort to change driver's license policy in New York State. And I would be very happy, I first got involved with this issue over 10 years ago when the state started to revoke driver's licenses from people who could not verify their social security numbers and it had a tremendous impact on people who get to work, couldn't get their kids to school, couldn't meet their basic day-to-day needs. And so I'd be happy to answer any concerns or questions that people have about the policy and about ways that other states have been addressing this issue. There are other states where they have found a solution and I think we here in New York can do better than we're doing now. But most of all, I wanted to introduce a woman whose story I think helps to illustrate why this is so very important for us here in the Hudson Valley, here in Hudson, here in Columbia County and throughout the state. So I just want to introduce Durdes Galván and I will be interpreting for her.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
My name is Maria de Lourdes Galván.
My full name is Maria de Lourdes Galván.
I'm here to talk to you a little bit about driver's licenses.
It's important, I don't have one.
It's important for medical appointments for my son.
For the school.
To go shopping.
I have to walk an hour to an hour and a half just to go shopping.
Also, even just to get to my child's school, I have to walk almost an hour because I live a little bit outside of town. I lived with the father of my son, we lived on a farm near New Paltz.
When the owner of the farm couldn't lend us his car to go shopping, we would sometimes walk up to two, two and a half hours.
I lived in a place called Stone Ridge, I don't know if you know where that is. I had to walk an hour and a half to do my grocery shopping with my son and it was, they weren't back roads, it was a highway essentially and people would drive by really fast and some people were respectful of pedestrians, but other people weren't and, you know, in an instant, there could be an accident. I think that's one of the reasons why it's so important for everybody to have access to driver's licenses. So even here, enrolling my child in school, they asked me to show me their driver's licenses and I didn't have one. Even when I go to the grocery store and I'm trying to sign up for a discount card, they ask me for my driver's license. I hope that you will all support us in having access to driver's licenses.
Thank you. So if anybody has any questions or wants to ask Durdes the question, I can answer for them. Anyone else? Mike?
I have a question. At what stage is this on the state level? Is there an active proposal in the Assembly or Senate? And what needs to be done? Is it exclusively up to the governor or does it involve a measure from the legislature?
There are some different options. There have been a few different bills introduced over the past 10 years or so. It does not have to happen through legislative action, although it very well could, it could also happen through executive orders. So right now, what we're hoping is to sort of build as much of a groundswell of support as we can at the local level to move either the legislature or the governor into action. And of course, the more support we can build, we think the more likely it is to see a change in the policy. There is a bill that's been introduced, but it is not necessarily the version that, it's not something that anyone opposes, but it's not necessarily the version that we're fixated upon. I think the goal is to achieve equal access for driver's licenses and there are a few different ways we could go about it, but right now, we're in this process of really trying to build public awareness about why it's so important and bring the attention of lawmakers to the issue.
So the wording of this is essentially, we encourage you to do what has to be done, whatever that is.
Exactly, very broadly understood, yeah.
Very good, thank you. Oh, very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Before we adjourn, Mike, John?
Sorry. This letter from the Department of the Army about the bullet cap at the commercial work facility. Third from the last, the fourth from the last, kind of, notification, termination, no, they're going to obtain any other federal, state, or local authorization. I'd like a list. I'd like to know what, what the local laws and, you know, city and county, or Aron County, I doubt it. But certainly the state, the CBR, and the federal, I'd like to know what the meeting agency is and make sure that we're coordinating this properly.
Anything else? Tiffany?
I would like to thank our speakers for educating us more with your personal experiences and I would like to also invite you to come back next week when we vote on this resolution. It's very important and I'll support it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, before adjournment, please, if you've introduced anything, please sign tonight and I have motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion.
And we...
Great.
Thank you.